Artists or you want to work with a partner can have you also then do a poem or a story and then add drawings to that. Then we also have a category called cartoon in which students can do, you know, a three frame cartoon or other image that's a cartoon, whether it's funny or satirical, that's their choice. And again, all of those different genres, they try to relate it to the theme. And as part of the judging process, they have to explain in writing how their piece relates to that theme. Do we have any of our high schoolers here that are presenting tonight? Is anyone published author illustrator? Okay, so we do. We have an alumni here with us this evening. Oh, of course we do, yeah. So some people fondly remember this activity and it's just a, it's a great enrichment activity. So, um, thanks to Mr. Tye Lock for referencing that slide. All right, there is a video embedded here more for board members. This is how we kick off the anthology each year with a video that gets students' minds thinking from all different directions, like how to explore this theme. That's there if you'd like to do it again at a different time. Families who are here, you'll get to see this next week at the University of Spence in Whitewater. So we're just passing along, but it's there in case you'd like to take a sneak peek at how did we roll out this year's theme last October. And then these are some of those inquiry questions that we send out to our students, like what are things in our world that are one in a million? Words that might get us thinking about this theme. Think of challenges you've faced and how have you overcome them? What about events in history or personal experiences that brings life this thing? So we have to try to spark interest from a third grader all the way up to an eighth grader. And of course, we're different cognitive levels there. So how do we go ahead and do that? So those are some of the ways that we brainstorm with our students. And then it's amazing the different directions they all go. So within the district, we have student work collected from all of the three elementary schools, the middle and options program. We then come together in December and judge those pieces to come up with our 20 court finalists. Following that, then I get to work with our students. I get to become their editor. And so we give feedback back and forth and we really take those pieces and polish them so that they're publication ready. And then we bring them to that judging in January. And again, we're very excited for our young authors and illustrators to share tonight. So moving right ahead, I'm going to, our authors and illustrators are going to come in now and they're going to find, they've all been assigned to one of our members here this evening to share a piece with. They're looking, they're reading, they're searching for it. Correctly, he's going to write over here. All right. While our students are stepping on for our families, if you would like access to this presentation, you can certainly email me. It's also being on the agenda tonight. For our board members, we've got two or maybe one or two pieces. All of the student art or all of their pieces are embedded in this presentation along with the names by published authors and illustrators. So as Mr. Tye Lock just kind of moves through those slides, you'll see each building has their featured authors and illustrators. So you can get another look at that and parents who can too. And all of the pieces are in there. What we do is we use our own student work as exemplars for next year. So these will be the poems and the art pieces that are shared to build excitement and, you know, model for our other peers throughout the district. So that's why I began to put this slideshow together with all their amazing work so that we can share that with our young students. So they can actually see our own students' work and they know that this is an achievable goal. The final thing is we'll have a few high schoolers with us next Wednesday. We also feature artwork from our high schoolers. We'll have four of our young artists also setting up there. So families who have something to look at prior to the anthology reception. I'll have a note coming home with all those details later this week too. So thank you to our students for being here and thank you to board members who have been a wonderful audience as always. Thank you so much. All right, we next we have an overnight travel. Hi, good evening. My name is Jenny Wayne Meyer. I am a culinary arts instructor at the high school. And I was very excited about the state film. We are here this evening to talk to you a little bit about FCC LA and to share some joy and ask permission for these fine students to attend a national competition that they each have earned the right to attend. So I'm going to let Haley kick it off a little bit about her event, a little bit about FCC LA.
Hi, so my name is Haley and I'm here with Izzy and Brooklyn and we're all part of the FCC LA club at Elkhorn. So FCC LA is a lot of culinary arts, a lot of the professional speaking and a lot of just those career building activities. Um, I've been an ex, I'm a senior, so I've been in FCC LA since freshman year. And I just started getting involved in a lot of the activities this year and I decided to compete in interior design. Um, and also that kind of follows my career that I'm going to be going into, which is interior design for interior architecture. And so I thought it was really cool that a culinary arts club also had the career that I'm going to be going into. And I just thought it was a really cool opportunity. And so I worked really hard on it. And then we all went to regionals and had a lot of fun and 12 of us went to regionals and all 12 of us qualified for state. And then we all went to state in the Calhary and we performed very well. And then we had three people advanced to nationals. And so it is going to be in Denver, Colorado, and we are super excited.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn. I'm also a senior at the high school. Um, I have been in FCC LA for three years and the last two years I've been leading an event. And both years I did baking pastries. Last year I was really close to going to nationals and this year I qualified for nationals.
My name is Izzy. I'm a sophomore at Elkhorn and this is my first year in FCC LA. I was persuaded to do a start event at regionals and I chose to do professional presentation and the topic I decided on was important. Music is something very important to me and I listen to it every day and I'm involved in it very heavily. So I just decided to share my love for the topic and I was lucky enough to go to state and qualify for nationals.
We have a very talented group of FCC LA members, which Abby and this is our treasurer. And we're just very excited to work with that Elkhorn at nationals. And I know that we had a presentation about state during spring break and I wasn't able to attend. And there were some questions regarding finances and some other pieces. So just wanted to come and see what your questions were. And to obtain permission for us to go. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Wayne Meyer?
So the, so looking at the financial tuition of this review, it says that almost everything is paid for. It says that most of it is paid for by the students, paid for FCC LA.
Last week we received a thousand dollars from the booster.
Gotcha.
That will help us start some of this as well.
Okay, I'm going to use the Elkhorn School District Education Foundation. And forgive me, what is that specifically? Like I don't want to wear.
It's, there's a, it's an education foundation that's entities, individuals, people can don't make money to. Uh, which has a separate 501(c)(3) is that foundation. Its sole purpose is to benefit students and programs of this school.
Gotcha.
And so then I know you have a request into the foundation as well and want staff or reviews or acts on that. I believe there's enough this year that that should get approved as well, which should be another. I don't know if the board will take the forum, but I think it was a request for 21, maybe. So it's. End goal is to be an endowment fund where it generates enough donations, but right now the donations have just been going to funding programs and stuff.
Okay, the only question, I know that I had a question, I know that Julia had a question, we'll ask when we have the presentation last time. The major, the only real question that we really majorly had was it looked as if we had 20-ish students going and we only have two rooms.
First state?
Yes.
Correct. So we had 12 students, right? So 12 students went to state along with two advisors. And the previous year, if you're familiar with the Calhary, they have homes you can rent. And we did a home one year and then we decided we wanted to be on the property. So we were able to get a, like a three room suite for the 12. And it ended up being more like cost efficient to stay in a three room with the 12 of them. And then Mrs. Jacobson and myself, we stayed in a separate room. And as you all know, the Dallas is wild and overpriced to be a conference rate. And so we do, we do fundraising. Our primary source of fundraising is all the catering that we do with the school district. And so we generate a lot of our funds that way. And then we do a couple of small fundraiser system.
At the time, we assumed that it was free, but we just, we assumed that's what it was. It was the only, the only thing that makes sense, not making sure.
Yeah, and we played, we played the numbers game, you know, 24 in this room and all of that. It's just, it's fantastic.
Yes, yeah, it always is there.
I mean, it is less expensive for us in many ways to go to Denver for those few days than it is in Calhary.
How does, so we're on here, it says, it says a bunch of it is paid by the students. How is that paid? Is it paid through fundraising with the students? Is it paid through by the parents? And how does, how does that work?
Well, they have the opportunity, they have fundraising accounts. So for example, on holiday, as we do a nice fundraiser, we sell cutlery and things. So they develop their own account and then they can always use that to attend various events like regionals or state or nationals.
Okay.
I would say at this point, because we have two seniors, I would say most of it's probably coming out of pocket. Is that accurate? So their families or maybe you guys can speak to that are paying for that portion. Um, the thousand dollars that came from the booster club, is that going to offset the, what FCC LA would be paying? Or is that helping the students at all? So what our immediate plan is, is we're going to use it for meals and ground transportation. And then we're going to kind of, we were going to wait and see at the hotel and kind of roll that out. Okay, yeah. So maybe there's possibility that some of the 950 will be offset by some of these other. Absolutely. I told them past the 950, there wouldn't be any other expenses and then the possibility of getting some of that.
How often do we have students go into nationals for this?
Um, this is our second year. I've been here seven years and this is our second year having three qualitivers.
So we had three qualitivers the last time?
We did.
When was that?
Uh, last year.
Last year, okay.
And I think as our program continues to grow or the strength of our students continues to grow. Look at the kids that were just in here. I can't wait until they're at the high school. They're going to be great. So, but the kids have so many opportunities at the high school too. I mean, we're just one of many CTSOs, Career Technical Student Organizations. And so, and they're all in multiple things. So it's just, you know, finding their passion and thankfully. But it's a fantastic baker. What she fails to tell you is there were 26 competitors at state and she was the top one. And Izzy comes in as a sophomore. It's her first time doing this and just kills it. And then Haley, I mean, we decided like two weeks before the deadline, she's like, I'm going to do it. And I said, I don't think you can do it. How are you going to get this all done? So they're self motivated. They're great kids. They're excellent examples.
All right, so we do need a motion to approve the overnight travel. Second?
I'll start.
It's been motion and seconded to approve the overnight travel request from FCC LA. Welcome, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingraham?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Correctly.
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Good luck.
All right. All right, next we have the lacrosse.
I'll just. Yeah, I'd like them to see your beautiful splash. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Handel, our athletic director of the high school to review the Elkhorn lacrosse.
Yeah.
Once again, thanks for letting us come in and talk tonight.
We'll talk about this journey that we're going on. The WI is just excited that we're going to add lacrosse as a sport. So we jumped in and had a bunch of meetings and, you know, hopefully give some guidance to you guys as to how to move forward. So everybody here, Nancy and Jordan are here and then Alton and Luke and John and Brett are all here as well. So, um, and I'll let those guys get reintroduced in just a minute as well. So they've been involved in our lacrosse program for quite a long time. So mark the next. Once again, it's being introduced as a spring sport in 2024. We just got word of that this fall. So when I heard about that, I got in touch with Jim Kretas, who's a principal over at Delavan area. And Nancy were involved in the club to get conversation started off what this is going to look like. Because we obviously have a pretty strong boys of lacrosse program going on in Elkhorn already. So their current arrangement is in the classic game conference. I'll talk about that a little bit in a second. Their current arrangement right now for co-op is with Elkhorn and Delavan in Williamsburg. Uh, in lacrosse, it's going to be one division. So co-oping with multiple schools doesn't impact anything in terms of the series because it's one division, not two. A Badger wants to join in with us as well. So next year we're talking about four schools involved. So, and there is some things involved in that, like when the terms of the number you're going to see. Financial responsibility for kids from other schools is the school's responsibility for those kids. And I have those numbers in just a second. So that slide is fine. Okay. I'm going to just introduce Nancy and Jordan now. And they're going to just give a little bit of a rundown on what's going on in the past with the club. And I'll let you guys have that or no.
Hi, Nancy DePonce. I am the president of the Elks Lacrosse Club, which is a high school age lacrosse program. And I'm also a parent of a lacrosse player. My son is on the high school team. Um, just to give you a little history, lacrosse has been in Elkhorn for about eight years. Started at youth level when Mike Shore, who was also. He set up a couple of learn to play clinics with the support of an existing club in the Kettle Moraine area. Um, and it just took off from there. We fell in love with it as a family and a lot of other families did as well. And they've had consistent growth since. Um, in 2018, we had a handful of players aged out from the youth program with no place to play then once they got to high school. So we made the leap of faith to separate our youth board and start a high school board. Um, as well to, you know, try to establish a place for those players to play because we didn't want to lose them to other programs. So we had those three kids and we were able to recruit enough to have a high school team in 2019. We had just enough players to get that started. And so this will be our fifth year as a high school age program. Um, four competitive years because we lost that 2020 year to COVID. Um, they played two years at the JV level, which is kind of required by the conference to get your feet wet. And so we played at diversity level the past two years. Um, I just want to give a shout out to our two captains that are here. We have two, two kids that have come up through the youth program. Played all four years in high school. They're going to play at the Division Three collegiate level next year. So this is how strong our program is here at Elkhorn. And we were so excited when the WI voted to bring it on as a sanctioned sport. Uh, because we've had lacrosse here in Elkhorn for so many years, it feels like this is our home. And we're really excited that at the possibility of, you know, having a team here in the high school. Do you want to add anything, Jordan?
Yeah, just to kind of add on to what she was saying. Alton is my son. He's been in playing lacrosse since seventh grade, like pretty much he walked into a practice. He was invited by a friend and he fell in love with it and he's been playing ever since. Uh, so we've been able to take advantage of like summer programs, fall programs, like trying to keep us sticking his hands as much as possible. Um, and he's one of the ones that's going to be playing at Mary and University Mary next year. But yeah, I mean, this club is growing and there's so much, not just with these guys here. But I mean, everybody that's involved that's playing now loves it and will continue to love it. And now that it's a WI's sport, it's going to make things a lot better for it.
Guys, just want to introduce yourselves and just give a real quick synopsis of lacrosse. How's it going? Something good about it.
So yeah, hello, my name is Alton Reynolds. I'm a senior this year. I play midfielder and LSM. Uh, LSM is longer stick. So a little bit of everything. I've played goalie in the past. Um, so yeah, like my dad said, I've been playing since seventh grade. Um, and removed from a couple of seasons for injury, but other than that, I just, I picked up the sport. I loved it, every moment of it. Loved it enough. I went and played summer, fall lacrosse with club teams in summer. And I love so much. I'm going to interview for the next four years hopefully.
Hi everyone, I'm Luke DePonte. I'm also a senior. Uh, next year I'll be playing at Aurora University in Illinois. Um, I've been playing since fifth grade, since the youth club started, I mean, all the way up through, I played attack. And I just, I'm really happy that we're even having the possibility of having it at the high school. I think for these guys and the younger guys coming up through the youth club now, it's going to be an even much better experience for them than what I've had. And I feel this year especially has been the best year I've felt as a youth club, being a feeder program. I know we have freshmen and sophomores who know the game, have great skill and can contribute to the team at a high level. So I'm excited to see what happens. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brett Ringhand. I'm a freshman. Um, I've been playing since I was in third grade, which was 2016 when it started. Um, I play like all team LSM, which is just again, longer stick. Um, I'm really excited that lacrosse will be, or hopefully, um, a high school sport here. Cause it just shows like growth and stuff, so.
Hi, my name is Robert Topsey. I'm a sophomore here at Elkhorn. Um, I've been playing since our program started to about eight or our seventh season this year. Um, I'm a goalie. Um, this year I started on our varsity program, our varsity team. And this team really means a lot to me and I feel like we have a really good family going and I really want to keep that going into the high school and get more people involved because I feel like it's a really good program that really brings people to it.
They are the only schools I saw offering it in Walworth County right now. And the other day I just got a thing back from the WI today. They announced an interest survey and I filled that out. And I think we're one of like three or four smallest schools. They're talking about a lot of schools that are in that conference. One block, show schools, a ton more, you know, Oak Creek, Simmer, Fisher, McCollum, those places. And I believe what Stosh has, I talked to him about getting the program going as well. So, um, I met with the lacrosse club multiple times, expressed the willingness to the WI that we want to get involved. Put the budget together, which you'll see in just a second. And then we got a bunch of donations from the lacrosse club that they're willing to give us. So let's skip on to the next slide.
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to add, John, having my, my two younger boys play lacrosse in the morning. Things I like about the sport is, I really enjoy sports that can engage kids of different body types, sizes and athleticism. And you said LSM, that's, you know, I have a long stick, but that's also being long stick mini. Is that right? So midfielders run the whole length of the field. Both my boys are like, I never want to play. Play, you know, they play defender and they have a limited area in which they have to run. So it works well for my roller polo kids. You know, they can also play attack because they have a limited built around there. And the minis have to run up and down all over the field. But it's, I like it as a sport because it engages, it can engage a lot of different body types and sizes.
For this man also. So I always tell people it's kind of a, an addition of like hockey, lacrosse and football. The gear is kind of like football. The movement style is like hockey and the substitution is very fast paced. But it's all on a grass field. So it's all like soccer style. Um, and the running is a lot like soccer.
It is one of the biggest growing sports in the country. Pickleball is pretty big too.
Is it, is it a spring or a fall sport?
Spring.
Spring.
Yeah, and I think that's mirroring what other states are doing.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, John.
No, it's fine. Thanks. No, it's fine. Thanks. Um, the classic game is what we've been a member of for lacrosse for the whole time. And then uh, so I had communication with them. They had to write off or sign off on it. Jack's funding the industry or was obviously wanting to continue on that relationship with us. So we are all set conference wise. And co-op wise.
Question related to that, the classic game is club right now. Will they still remain the conference of summer club and summer WIA or?
I think everybody in their conference is going to the WIA. Yeah, I would think if that was still club based, we'd have a really hard time finding teams to play.
So we don't go WIA.
Really hard time finding games. Yeah. So some conclusions, um, you know, obviously we want to move to WIA. The budget considerations do include recouping money. Um, there would be a formula there that's not completely worked out. We pay that formula for some of our kids to join other schools or other co-op agreements that we have. You know, it's basically the middle expenses divided by the kids who have participated. Next year, we're anticipating around thirty kids. I ran the numbers for thirty and for forty for you. Um, but you'd see that twenty of those kids, my fear is that we didn't have it, that a lot of those kids would love it options elsewhere that where they could go play in WIA. And I don't want to, you know, recognize what that impact would have if kids decided to leave because of it. Obviously, if you're going to make that decision, you have to make it for your sophomore year uh, for WIA reasons. But so there's budgets there for, and I anticipate a larger turnout as it becomes a WIA sport. I would see no reason why it wouldn't need to grow. Um, so and then a lot of people, the financial block would be gone um, by going to the WIA because it's, you know, but it's rather expensive to get started um, for a lot of kids. So there's the budget with forty kids. The stuff in yellow is stuff that in other schools that I've talked to that a lot of times people are supplying those. So like as an example here, we don't buy batting helmets anymore. Kids supply their own batting helmets. We don't buy any bats for baseball or softball. Kids bring their own stuff. So could you get by without helmets and chest protectors and gloves and things like that? You could. Um, there is a place in uh, Waukesha called Hot Fur Lacrosse that has a rental program where you can pay a hundred eighty bucks per kid to get equipment rented then for the year. Uh, so that's an option as well. So that's, that's what the yellow stuff is for a lot of kids. These guys get voucher for that. The sticks and the elbow pads, they want their own stuff, like having a bat or whatever, a glove for baseball. So the goalie equipment, some of that stuff's being donated, but that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of other fees and costs like that. If you want to skip ahead to the one with thirty, I can go back to answer all the questions. You can see the numbers is a little bit different. So this is basically different.
So this bottom line number includes the entire column, but more than likely like it's more common for the players to supply their own. So this is not backed down.
That would be the highest in that number. Yeah. So like next year, based off a budget of thirty kids, if we ended up with thirty, um, obviously if we had more than thirty, we'd have to look into some of that rental stuff, but yeah, kids had their own thing. We wouldn't be buying all of that stuff for them. So. Yeah. Okay, I guess. The paperwork for the WIA is due on June first. I should have stated that a little bit earlier, but you know, obviously um, that's, you know, what we're looking to do is jump in and join um, next spring with them. So. Questions?
Going back to that first slide, when you were talking about boys and girls. So you're looking at introducing both boys and?
If we get, we don't at this time have any interest from the club level in the girls.
Okay, so right now it's really?
If a girl wanted to play, you would find out what's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we have an agreement already with another school. As of now, we've had zero kids in the lacrosse program, the girls.
Right, and there's only boys at the youth level at this time.
There is one, one youth, but one youth girl currently. But because we do not offer at the youth level, a girls program, they can play co-ed.
That's another option too.
Yeah, the girls lacrosse has different rules, different equipment.
Yeah.
Less equipment. But a girl could play a boys team too.
Yeah.
Right. My next question is, what would be the you're saying thirty or forty?
Well, next year we're looking at thirty.
Okay, alright, so.
I'm thinking there's going to be more kids that are going to just say, hey, we want to play. And then, then I think the, the one would be that that hundred eighty dollar rental for those students that have equipment because we don't want to turn anybody away from.
How many kids are typically on a lacrosse team?
Yeah, that very is like our, the Bellicorn program has been on the smaller side. Um, especially when we were a, a first year JV team, there was only like twelve, thirteen guys. So there was only ones, okay, so those.
How many people are on the field?
There's, there's, um, those, those minis that have to go back and forth all the time. Those are the guys that get subbed in quite often because they are going back and forth.
So ideally, if you had twenty on the team.
Yeah, twenty is a really good number.
Yep.
Um, and as of right now, I would say we probably have sixteen, seventeen around there um, that are consistently going to play on varsity.
So when you have thirty to forty, maybe running a JV.
Yeah, well, we have.
Which we're doing now. Yeah.
But like, and the way that it works, um, you're limited to the number of quarters that you can play against. So you can't play four quarters of JV and four quarters of varsity. You can play six quarters. So there's a couple of guys like Brett. He plays four quarters of JV um, defense, like not the LSM that goes back and forth on the field. Uh, but then we bring him up to varsity and have him in for two quarters playing LSM.
Sure.
First one is one, like saying how impressive it is that, I mean, two of you guys aren't even going to be here next year. Um, and you guys are here like advocating for your junior guys. So I'm going to slur it to you too. Like you guys didn't have to come for this. Yeah, you guys came because you guys are actually passionate about actually having this as a sport here. So yeah.
Great words right out of my mouth. That's really awesome to hear too.
Yeah, seriously. It's really cool. Um, says a lot about a program that you guys have already built um, on the ground. Um, so the question that I had for, for somebody, the financial stuff. Um, so, so, and this is just me not knowing anything about the grounds. Okay. So I've got on here balls. It only says it one, but it says four hundred forty dollars. That'll make no sense. Okay, so it's like it's a box of one box. Officials, we are, I mean, what is?
That we're just, that's contracted from the classic kids. So that's the thing that they charge. That's eighty-five dollars to work the varsity games, the WIA. Um, it's an eighteen game schedule, so I took half of them, the hole, which is nine tests to official, but eighteen. Yeah, workers, what is this? Workers are clock workers. Somebody's in charge of the penalties. So that's basically it. And what's the third one I'm thinking of?
We have a person on the, the clock. So stopping and starting during the game, somebody to time penalties. And then we typically have somebody do stats.
And taking checks is another one too. So yeah.
You get pulled off like hockey.
Gotcha.
So yeah, and what I'm sticking to that I have on there too, this will charge.
Okay.
So looking at the budget, Devin, if you take the total expenses off of those items in yellow, it's about half of what that total um, budget is. So it takes out about half of it.
Yeah. Okay.
And we will be recouping money from, and I, I don't want to throw a number out, but I would guess it's going to be about five hundred bucks a kid from those other schools. So you're talking thirty-five, four thousand dollars back each year from those other school districts. In terms of that's roughly, and I got to figure out exactly that, I'm going to minus what it costs per year divided by the number of kids. That's not what we're doing right now.
Yeah, yeah.
More, yeah, we didn't get from those schools, but.
Right.
Sean, I just had a question about the um, the co-op. So this year would just be Delvin, Darian and Williams State.
No, they are in it this year with these guys.
Oh, they're already. So Badger wants to come in next.
Yeah, and I don't know if they've had much communication with you guys in the past. They want to jump in because they're most good with the WIA sports.
We did have a couple from, a couple players from Badger a couple of years ago. We haven't had yet.
Yeah, and I anticipate when they have other schools that are going to reach out um, to some point. They'll grow into, they'll occasionally agree that they've already talked to them in the future. So that's you know, people are going to be making decisions off that in terms of where to go to school.
John alluded to it, but just to be very clear on with the becoming a WIA sport, in a way it becomes and, and with the classic game and shifting over to the WIA. And the only opportunity that you have to participate in have those games is to become a WIA sport.
Right.
The reason why all these schools would want to co-op and the reason they've got to provide that opportunity to those kids, or those kids will sort of program themselves.
Correct.
And so.
You get two kids, you get two kids to open a role.
It.
It pays for itself. Yeah.
So we've got, on your, on your slide, we've got four, or excuse me, uh, seven individuals that we're looking at that are outside the school district that we are maybe potentially looking at coming in for.
Oh, I think that for sure.
For sure. Okay. Um, okay. That's about a third of the entire team. So does that mean that each one of these schools that would pay for us, but not for full, for like the total, yeah, right, for the yearly cost? Okay. Um, and that would, that's not reflected on the budget, correct? Because we just don't know.
Right, okay. Divided per pupil.
Yeah, but we do that for other sports, not just like. Heather, I was going to go back to what we were saying. As far as the divisional placement, like we are, we don't co-op very often and we definitely try to stay with the co-ops where we're not in division one already, but when
This is just.
The size of the bag in division one, it's all levels. It doesn't make any difference if you had more schools.
I just wasn't clear that it, that Badger was coming in in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, the, the, obviously the opportunities to get in advance in state tournaments, all these are pretty big to a lot of people. And, and so I think the timing from the WIA's perspective was interesting doing it now, but you know, I, we had all heard that it was coming. They wanted some assurances from what we said, that it was fifty schools before they moved forward. I saw the list today. I could then state there's like seventy-five or so. So pretty significant number.
What the, so the for, 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 for kids lacrosse itself, okay, I mean, how is that, is it like tournaments? Like it would be for like basketball where you go for like an entire weekend. You play in like twenty schools or is it, I mean, how, how is that?
It would be kind of more like just weeknight games. Every once in a while we'll have a weekend game as well. Um, double headers. I think we, this is a thing of the past. We haven't had a double header in a while.
We had one last year and that, that's, it, the way, if it's bowl games, like we did last year, we had a double header, wasn't really a good idea because it takes, it takes a lot to play one game, but to actually play two games, track, flag, it's kind of rough. Yeah, like in, in tournament, tournaments in like summer, um, where you play like three, four games in a day. But they're like twenty minute running clock halves instead of twelve minute quarters where time stops. So like it, the game lasts like fifty minutes versus an hour and a half, hour, twenty minutes. That is normal.
In the context, you could play two or three, five minutes. You really want to get eighteen, that's it.
Are we, are we sticking in a local area in terms of, and I mean local, very like a very broad term here, right? I mean, I'm assuming southeast Wisconsin. In terms of the conference, I guess, I mean, who do you have to play?
Mike.
Yeah, I'd say start shooting towards Milwaukee that's where.
Okay.
I think a kind of lock is probably the farthest that we go.
Sussex Hamilton as a team.
Yeah.
Go as a team, watch Shaw, Western, Washington, Southern, then Florida, Tulsa, schools, Abbott, Oak Creek, another one.
I think from what I've heard is that they're going to respect the existing conferences as much as they can. So the classic gate is really southeast Wisconsin. They have the big Badger, which is a lot of Bay County um, teams and then the Bay Valley, which is Green Bay, Appleton, you know, northern Wisconsin. So I think just because of travel concerns and realistic, you know, game night matchups. We'll probably stick more with um, who leaves or estimate lines in that southeast Wisconsin. Not knowing anything about lacrosse. What kind of a field do you play on? Do you play on a soccer field, a football field?
It's essentially the size of a football field, but the end lines are the back end lines of the end zone.
Sure.
They're close enough to that. Well, yeah, it's like roughly, it's very close to the size of a soccer field, which is bigger perimeter than a football field.
So where are you playing in Elkhorn?
In Elkhorn, it's like the, the practice JV ball field, like behind the turf. Um, like, I mean, turf is definitely like almost every school that we play has a turf field. Um, it's becoming that way. Um, and there's even like a kind of like, uh, they are playing on a turf, on the turf for the first time this year. And they don't have lines on the turf, but there's this paint that you can actually paint the lines and then wash it away, whatever. Like it's, it's a very temporary thing.
Okay, so we have the capability to create a field.
They use our fields right now.
So they use the, uh, so we're using, you guys use the fields over by the middle pool area, right?
They don't, they have the grass field.
Oh, okay. Is that where you guys would continue playing them?
Well, we'd really like to play on the turf if we can get work. That, that field is adequate, but it's not, um, it's worn away. So there's no grass in front of the, the goals. And it's not leveled all the way from, you know.
So you're looking to play on the football field.
Yes.
With modified, with modifying the line.
Yep, with by a degree hole.
Yeah, and that, that's why I brought up the paint. Like if, if that happens in the future, there is a paint that just washes away.
It just would level the playing field for us?
Yeah.
Because like I said, most of the high schools that we play, they have a turf field. So then they, they have to come to us and then like, I gotta go play on the grass.
Sure.
And and for, like, I mean, Luke and I are obviously going to play uh, next year at the college level. Um, for the younger guys too, if they're looking for that, there isn't a college team that plays on a grass field at this point. They call turf fields. Even Mary, they don't have as developed of a lacrosse program. It's kind of a universal turf field, but it's a turf field.
So um, in terms of practice, um, we have it's a spring sport, so we have track using the field and soccer. So how in terms of being able to?
But and like we have practice at night and I don't believe anybody is on the turf. So we're in practice on the turf. Like when it's available, we'll go on.
The club is accustomed to practicing later in the evening, you know, to accommodate the existing spring sports anyway. And we're probably looking at coaching um, being outside of the staff, school staff. So their availability probably doesn't start until five PM early in the evening.
So what's your ballpark? What, what do you think traveling lacrosse would be? As far as like some other sports, I don't think it'll be a whole lot.
Yeah, I was just going to say there is some trouble.
Currently as parents, we take our voice to all their games. I think I have an hour round trip.
A high school game and so forth. You're probably with nine plus playoff games, probably eleven games.
Yeah.
Um, I would figure.
Comparable to what basketball.
Probably four thousand.
John, would you have some gate receipts? So that, that would be some revenue.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, we've tried to include them on our social media posts and stuff and accommodate them as much as we can, recognizing that this is coming itself. Um, and I think that's gone really well this year. So happy to do that.
So I'm going to ask you a tough question. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to hope, I'm hoping that you can answer. If, if everything goes as planned, what is the highest amount you think you'll see in, in terms of participation? Forty?
Yeah.
Okay, if everything doesn't go to plan, thirty is what you're saying is the, is the bottom limit? Yeah. Okay.
Well, and I think we're going to be between thirty and forty, would you?
Yeah, I would say we're just under thirty right now. And if it's offered to all students as a school sport to play, like I think we would get another seventy guys right now.
Yeah, I think the, the financial limitation has kept some students from participating already just because of the amount of beer they have, that the cost that adds up and we're operating as a club, so we have to charge registration fee, you know, just to participate. So can you take that away? It opens up. I think we're going to have a lot more walk-ons.
Look at off the top of my head, like I can think of two guys in particular that they came to practices, they loved it, they wanted to play. But when they, you know, when they talk to their parents or whatever, they But when they, you know, when they talk to their parents or whatever, that give them the pay for it, like it, they just backed out.
I think we could see the numbers jump up a little about forty, but we do have a lot of other spring operations. So that way.
Yeah.
Keep it within that, that framework. It's just when we saw the price shift with that youth football and selling them, that's just been on there. And so, which is a good thing from the standpoint that would be removing a financial barrier for some kids and. Nailing them just to.
And so, uh, my, my final question, hopefully, I never set up, but, um, my, my, hopefully my final question is, so I know you guys mentioned girls, uh. Potentially having to, um, have that work with another club to be able to get them in the sport, um, if that comes to mind. Um, my daughter is a spitfire and she plays youth football right now. Um, she's one of the only youth football girls right now. Um, so in the event that we get enough girls in there, um, into the sport, are we, are we coming back to, uh, look for additional. Uh, funds for that as well? Or would this, I mean, how would that work with you?
It depends on how many kids we had. If we had enough for our own team, I think we would come back. Otherwise, we would just look for some other options for, we'll see people play with us.
What does that, what does that mean? Like in terms of, so I know.
If we had enough kids to form a team, I think we'd be interested in doing.
Okay.
We didn't, we would say.
The, the girls like.
We had a lot of play on the board.
Okay. Okay.
I, the girls like football is coming. Yeah, it was.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
I, I, I don't, to be frank, I, I don't know. I don't have a daughter who plays girls lacrosse, but when I watch them play, I'm like, geez. Put the helmet on and then give them the regular pads and run around with goggles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Girls.
Well, there's contact not allowed.
Yeah, we get, the head is also on, literally. And still, that's what I mean. It still happens. Yeah. I don't, I'd almost rather suit them up and let them have contact, but. That's just, yeah, I'm not gonna change lacrosse. But, um, that's why, I would just suit your girl up and let her play the, you know, show us all, you know, they work.
All right. So are there any other questions?
So what, what's the ask, John? Are you, are you saying that? I mean, that the helmets, the protector gloves and pads and sticks, that's gonna be self-minded. The thrust of it's gonna be funded by the district.
That's the direction we wanna go. We can do it that way. I do think that a lot of those kids are gonna have that, um, potential, but then I think we need a, an, an idea of how to get a kid who can afford it. And others who can't do that. So that's why I threw that number in.
I, I would recommend, I, I like the proposal and what John's laid out there, and I understand kids wanting to supply their own. Yeah, cause you sweat a lot, those arm pads and so forth. It's not that different, but I don't want. It to be an incentive for any kid who wants to participate. I think that goes against what we do with our, our school sponsored sports. And so I would like us to have an accounting for, you know, who needs what. And, and I know you, you can, we could go the route to just buy some equipment. Or purchasing the equipment ourselves to have our own stock from that standpoint after, um. What was, when, when I purchased my kids' equipment, I know it's a little probably higher in for the high school level. But for example, about three years, it's paid for itself. Is that accurate? And the helmets have what a ten-year lifespan or, you know, footballs are.
And like one size fits all too.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a wiser investment for the district to do that accounting for as we transition in and. Start acquiring the equipment for the students because it does have that.
Yeah.
It's gonna pay for itself very quickly.
And then what if we get to the, or pass this first, if you look on there, you know. Balls, coaches, officials, workers, conference breeze, the uniforms go into the uniform rotation. So a lot of that stuff gets. Yet after the first year of it, so we're talking probably, you know, just normal things that everybody else does for officials, workers, coaches and. Um, so.
Yeah, my, my math was about, um, with four thousand for transportation was about twenty-six thousand, not counting down the stuff he had highlighted. Um, so that's probably the ongoing expense. Of course, the uniforms already in there, but we'll, we'll go with that.
So.
Yeah, there's six.
If I understood you correctly, um, you're saying that ongoing, so year after year will be about twenty-six then?
Um, no, because it includes uniforms.
Right, so it would happen less, right?
Like around twenty probably.
Okay.
Just, I mean, round numbers. I just think, you know, this is gonna be new added expense, you know, that's not in our current budget. So I just gotta make sure of.
Well, I mean, like the goals, the goals aren't something that you're gonna need to replace every year. So the officials, the workers, the conference bees, the coaches, the balls. Yeah, and that's really about it.
What's our, you know, football, the expense of the high school, do you know what their budget is?
It's a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Well, they do know that they, they go off, they do go out fundraise.
Well, they do, see, they, 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 plus they have gate receipts that come in for the cost sets, larger offsets for, for the cost is much more to it. This is football.
John, are you confident that this program will pay for itself by the attraction of other students to the district?
I would hope so. I think if not, they're attracting retention.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I would say, I doubt it. I'm simply looking at the program of these students.
So I mean, just, just off the top of my head, there's seven students that we're talking about next year. Um, after all of the general costs coming here at five hundred dollars per student. I mean, um, year after year for ten years, which is what approximately, uh, I'm hearing is the lifespan of the equipment. Um, what, thirty thousand? Um, about thirty-five thousand, uh, for, for that ten-year lifespan. So that practically offsets everything. Um.
I think she is referring to like that annual operating. Are we getting a track three O P involved in or routine three O P involved in? Is those that's. You're probably twenty-five thousand dollars to grant.
Okay, gotcha.
I, I would say it's a fair bet that if we don't. Implement a high school lacrosse program, that we would lose a minimum three kids to. They might want to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Especially if they're close.
Yeah.
And for potentially another local school district that decides they wanna invest the money in.
Yeah.
So a budget of like fifty-two, fifty-six, five? Is that, is that what we're getting from forty people?
No, I, I think a lot of those that are, like, these are all just one-time expenses if we were to pay for every single.
Yeah.
Kid and I think.
But this, this next school year.
I think this next school year, we're looking at thirty, a budget for thirty kids. Right? Is that what you were anticipating?
Well, I think we may have more than thirty.
We might have.
But, but combining that with those who are bringing their own equipment, that's what I'd look for.
Yes.
In the.
You're gonna have a large group of kids that already have all their own equipment. John is a goalie. He's outfitted for, for both goalie and a field player. So I outfitted him at. Over a thousand dollars last year because they changed regulations. Now, thank gosh, they've already changed those regulations and, and test pads and things like that. Um, so that's something that I can't imagine would, would change again, but we have to do all new equipment. So John won't be using school equipment. He has his own stick. The stick is, and these guys can vouch, extremely personal.
Yes.
A kid may start out with a school stick. If they stick with lacrosse, they're going to get their own stick. John has four sticks. I know some of these other boys have, you know, so it's just, there's definitely. We rent, he started as a fourth grader playing youth. We rented, we rented all the way until high school because he was growing. It was much easier to use. That equipment that we could give back at the end of the season and let another kid use.
Yeah.
Before we, we bought into our own. Now he has his own and they want their own.
Yeah.
So when they can do it.
It's always a baseball bat.
Yeah, exactly. And a glove and different things like that. So we're looking at being able to. As, um, Mr. Tadlock said, be able to give some kids the opportunity that maybe, I know John has friends that too, they wanted to play. But their parents didn't want to completely outfit them this year. So having that ability to be able to do that, are you gonna have to outfit thirty kids? Not anytime soon.
So if we look at just the thirty and say, hey, for this year only, and then we can readjust to a later point, look at the thirty and say, hey, this, this is the budget that we're looking at. Um, this would be an initial year startup.
Yeah.
Subsequent budgets would be less, and I'm sure we could also approach the boot-up problems.
Yeah.
You sure that you want it to have a good initial year, which would be a lot of paper around to it.
The, uh, LAC lacrosse club is also willing to, you know, make a, a donation too. Um, cause we're gonna obviously dissolve if it comes under the school per mew. And, you know, we're prepared to whatever's left, um, just pass it along to get the program up and running.
Okay.
I can't give you a value right here.
Of course.
Yep, we're prepared to do that.
Looking for a motion.
So I'm looking to, uh, approve the creation of the lacrosse team as a school sponsored sport in the Elkhorn area, uh. Elkhorn area high school as prevented.
Wait a second. All right, roll call vote.
Uh, one second.
As a former goalie, I'd support your.
Yeah, he was, he was the goalie last year.
Um.
You wanna say with the initial budget not to exceed forty-three thousand?
Yeah, that we're, that we're clear on that.
Yeah, I wonder.
We want, yeah, and the transportation, so forty-seven.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, good point. Okay. With the initial budget not to exceed forty-seven thousand two hundred. Seven more.
All right.
Okay, so you want to modify?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you're certain. Right. Uh, Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingerstall?
Yes.
Mr. Adama?
Yes.
Director, please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Congratulations. So please win state, you know.
This boy's a sophomore and he doesn't care where he goes to school as long as he gets to play lacrosse when it comes to that. So this is, this is wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Thank you. We have to go to practice. Thanks everyone.
As a mom who's been watching lacrosse, my son works in soccer great.
This is awesome.
Yeah, just made my name.
Okay, next we have a district recommendation. Jan, I'll give you the presentation.
Thank you. My name is John Hinzler and I'm the defense coordinator. And tonight, speaking as a representative of the ad hoc committee. Um, and by the board, I just listed our committee members. Adam Andre just joined us, so thank you, Adam, for joining in with us. Um, yeah. I wasn't gonna put his name on there, but he did have some input at the last meeting, so I figured I should add that. Um, yes. And then I just wanted to know before we kind of get into this, that we have, the committees collaborated with other people involved in this or that would be involved if this was to happen. So. Because it would be out at the football field, John Hamill, some of the high school coaches and John's, uh, culture committee group, coaches culture committee group. Uh, we talked to the Wilson and Yankee families, um, building at grounds. And Bada Swadic with R C Welding, who was offered to construct the, the arches, you'll see as we go on. And the booster club, we wanted to make sure that we weren't duplicating or mimicking what the Hall of Fame does. And getting in the way of that or getting in the way of even the ninety century way that they've already constructed. Oh, there were the bricks in that. Hopefully it can be an enhancement versus something that was copied in the video. So would be at the gate that as you come in, I don't know if.
Kind of the side gate. I just side gated.
It's when they come, they come around.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. I thought you were just questioning what I was saying. No. Um, we're looking to the. So as you enter, not the main gate with the big arch, but the side of the football field, this is entrance where any athlete that can teach, whether it's track, soccer, football. Enters and right now it's a deadened gate that's been opened. This is the location we're proposing. Um, this is the gate or the arch and gate that's there now in the main entrance. Go ahead, Jason. And this is kind of a, a flip art of. A similar version of what something like that would look like in that entryway where the gates are now. And as, and like I said, all the athletes, coaches in that entrance are there. And then one more. This is what we would like or propose to have the gate be as a commit, contribute and compete. Which are three of the six core values of the athletic department's mission. Um, and these, these came to us when we proposed it to John. He presented it to the coaches. And six would not fit on there. We, they were getting really small. So these were the top three that they said they would like to see. Um. And, and this picture, obviously, it's, it's not an engineer drawing. Um. So picture that first gate. It won't curve like that at the end, so the words won't curve at the end. I can kind of envision that. Uh, go ahead. And then just the colors, the plaques would be on each end. And we'll get to that as far as that one would be for Dean Wilson, one would be for Paul Yankee, which is. How this was presented originally and how can we recognize the legacy of those two coaches? Um, long time coaches, long time teachers, educators, non-teacher friends, and probably missing a few words. The best part of my presentation is Bob Swadic, who's a nineteen eighty-six alumni and owns R C Welding. Had came out, measured it up and said, I'll make them and I'll take them and, you know, and sell. Um, which I was really pretty generous.
Yeah.
And then the plaques would come through donations. I know we've had some people early on that have expressed interest. If you do anything, let us know. We'd really like to donate. If you're ever gonna do anything out there for Dean and Paul, who are obviously long time coaches and teachers. And go ahead. The two plaques below are the ones that they have for the Wisconsin Football Association that are in our lobby now. And the other ones are just examples. Um, the ad hoc committee kind of came up with not wanting to be too wordy, but presenting something like the, the brass or copper plaques above. That add that, that sketch in there with maybe their years of service. And maybe a, a short saying or something that they used to say all the time that didn't have any swag. But truly. Something neat came out of it, and I think this came, you know, Adam recognized it when he was in our last meeting. That by putting each one of their plaques on each side. Kind of to him spoke to like they're the, they were the pillars. And those that brought toward, you know, football and integrity and things like that. And I thought, you know, I never thought of it that way, but that kind of really spoke to the committee. And I think it's a good way to look at it. And the other thing is that it's something that every athlete and every coach, whether it be an Elkhorn team or not an Elkhorn team, will pass through. So I thought those are some of the really good ideas that came out of that committee. And then we also thought, so what happens if someone else says, well, that's really nice, if it does happen? And they want to nominate someone. So we thought we should come up with a nomination process. And in that process, we kept it very vague. As far as it's a legacy nomination, so if there was somewhere down the line, it was a gymnastics coach, a basketball coach, a, a powerlifting coach or someone like that. In the nomination process, the committee would form, if you go down to the bottom, Jason. Um. Of coaches, administrative committee members, school board members. And that decision could be made at that time because maybe if it's a gymnastics coach. That committee wants to develop what that legacy looks like in gymnastics area. Or in the basketball area or the weight room area that, it doesn't have to be specific to continuing to add plaques down those pillars. But yet there would be a process and a way for someone to nominate if they really felt that. Yeah, someone deserved it or someone should be looked at. So I'm asking for no ones?
Thank you.
Yeah. Did the committee have a discussion as it relates to, so for example, John. Did the committee have a discussion as it relates to, so for example, Joanne Schaefer, the track is named after Joanne Schaefer, do we. Simultaneously put that plaque up, or is that something that gets nominated and goes through that process at the same time, or? There was conversation of, should it be, you know, Dean, Paul, and Joanne? Or is the track being named after Jan, Joanne already that legacy portion? And that, it kind of went full circle a couple times. And then once, you know, it spoke to like, hey, constructing this whole, our arch. And those coaches kind of being the pillars of this legacy arch. Joanne has the track named after her out there, that's her legacy, and that's been recognized in that way, so that's kind of how it was left.
Is there anywhere?
So someone would need to make the nomination. Yeah.
Is there anywhere where, I know that we named the track after her, but is there anywhere that says her name?
Yeah, there'll be a huge sign, oh, Joanne Schaefer Track. Yeah. So I felt like, back to the nomination form, that. If someone was to have nominated, or said, hey, we're gonna name a Joanne Schaefer Track, like, that's kind of already been done.
Sure.
Again, just, I'm just.
Yep.
Speaking from a heart, the way we look at it, it's a way, and that's certainly valid. So I, I think what we're looking for from the ad hoc committee is approval to. Motion to basically create the archway and put that up, which. From the way we're a public component alone, I think it's easy to say that would be a, you know, fair amount of that.
Hey, Jason, real quick, um, I, I don't have any questions or comments really beyond, um, I do just want to find out. Or thank Paul, he's on right now watching, he was a huge proponent when I spoke to him about this, he was, this was something that he deeply wanted to have happen. Um, and he was, and what, right before he, he left, it was, just make sure this happens, gets, gets through.
I, I think, and it's been, and I appreciate John and his. Um, effort and, and, you know, Kevin and Paul and all those that have worked on that ad hoc committee, because. It's been discussions for. Years, to be honest with you, how do you recognize these different individuals and do it in a way that's sensitive to their predecessors and also. Recognizes that there will be others that come and follow them that warrant that type of branch as well. So the Wilson and, and the Yankee family was pretty touched that. Their people weren't even putting this work and considering it, they're pretty thankful that it was even, yeah.
Will be constructed so that, I mean, over the years, hopefully it'll be there for a long time, if we get, fill up one side. That plaques could go on the other side of the post as well.
Yeah, it would take a bit to fill it up, but.
Well, I, I understand that.
But you could, if, if there was soccer, track, or football coaches, that someone said, you know what? We want to nominate someone, and that went through, yeah, I think Bob thought the sides are gonna be ten and a half feet high. The middle is, I think, eleven and a half, because we also checked with Fire and Rescue to make sure if need be, and if they're still.
Yeah.
And then same with tractors and trucks and that with our maintenance department. So, I mean, essentially, you would have, you could put twenty plaques out there, or do you use up both sides or one side each?
Okay.
I won't be around then.
Yeah, I won't either.
I appreciate R.C. Welding and Willie, they've always been wonderful, they did the benches in front of our school. My one suggestion that, that I would make is. To, for us to go ahead and put together a, a class unity site for that, because just like when we did the, um, memorial for Officer Patrick. And, and we know when Dean Wilson died, we had a lot of people approach, they wanted to. Yeah. Contribute to something like that, and, and I think. Um, giving them that opportunity if they want to, not saying that we need to raise that amount, but.
Right.
So then offset or recover the materials costs, or for the time for R.C., I, I think it would give people an opportunity to. Also say that they contributed to that.
Does we, um, normally in a certain sense, it's, uh, donated time and materials, do we usually recognize them in any way that would be.
Yeah.
Inside of the.
We do, we do, yeah, well, we could do, we have a gift for them, because then they can utilize that at all time. For purposes they want. To your day, Jason, if donations exceeded what the plaques costs were, then we just say, take that off of. Oh, yeah, we can cross that related to, I, I, I would suggest that, because that's not a cheap archway.
Right.
Um, it's a significant.
It's, it's a significant donation.
And research. Yeah, very significant, yeah. And, and I just know that we were approached by a lot of people, so we could do the fun, and, and help offset that.
Just, just quickly, there's one thing I'd, I'd like to say, I think it's great, um, the work of the committee, and of course. Coach Wilson was my football coach many years ago, a great person, you know, I just, just barely missed Coach Yankee when I went into high school, but. Certainly a great man, and he definitely deserves this. I would like to say that, um, as we move forward with the committee, I think I'd like to see a nomination process for our great educators as well. Um, I think there's some recognition that we could do there, um, for a lot of teachers that have dedicated a lot of years to our district and done a lot of great things. Um, it's not in the form now, but I'm sure you could just make another one or work on that at a later date.
Yeah, so Matt, that was kind of part of this process is, um. When you guys asked to have the ad hoc committee created, we kind of broke off this piece because we felt it was time sensitive. As far as hopefully getting something like this, if it was approved, constructed before next year football season, so by August, it would be up. It would be ready to go for that twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then the next task is looking at a wall of honor for those that have served in the military that are alumni. As well as like a wall of, and I'm gonna use distinction, but it may not be distinction, but a wall of distinction for staff and alumni. Um, that were nominated, kind of like a wall of fame for professionalism. Is that kind of what you were thinking of?
Yeah, that's exactly it, thanks, John.
So what I'm hearing with this is that the ad hoc committee would continue.
Yep.
There's more work to do, yeah. We just kind of broke this piece off, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the archway to the athletic stadium honoring Dean Wilson, Paul Yankee, and great. A nomination process for future legacy nominations as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the archway for the athletic stadium honoring Dean Wilson and Paul Yankee, and to create a nomination process for future legacy nominations. Uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work. And we are finally to our school board minutes. From April twenty-fourth. Uh, we have regular enclosed session, um, did we, we didn't receive.
No.
We did not receive the closed question. Is it, is it, is it in the folder? No, it's not in there. So we'll have to tally the closed session, uh, minutes until next time. Jason? Yes, okay.
Um.
Were there any questions regarding the, uh, regular session minutes from last time? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion for. Motion to approve the minutes from the, uh, school board meeting on April twenty-fourth, twenty-three, yes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the school board meeting minutes from April twenty-fourth as presented, roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Reckles?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, uh, general and other fund bills.
The, uh, general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number one four nine, one nine three to one four nine, three oh one, wire transfers. Nine sixty-one through nine sixty-three, ACH check number one seventy-five through seven oh four, and a combined amount of. Four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twelve cents. And there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills.
Somebody have any questions regarding that?
I have a thank you bill, because you read my mind, well, I'm trying to sell this.
So. I tried to guess, and what I think question.
Literally read my mind. What kind of card have you written?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that was one of my questions. Yeah, what was the car rental for, Bill, do you remember?
Um, for enterprise?
Yeah.
I remember which group.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Um.
We, we will. Yeah, vehicles for student trips from time to time, or sometimes they invite some individual student transport, it's less expensive than. Come check me out.
Got it.
Of course, we have a group that are going to a conference, sometimes we've done that too.
Okay.
They want to take a vehicle.
Sure. Um, I had a question on, uh, in the Inspiration Ministries, there were some student wages.
Yeah, that's from, uh, Joanne Pella has a grant, it's a youth apprenticeship grant, and it's actually for Inspire Coffee, that works through.
Right.
Yeah, so there's student networks there, but she uses grant and fund.
Okay. Okay, we're good. And then my last question is, um, the heart monitors for Jackson PE department. Can you give a little bit more context for that, and why are we buying heart monitors for middle schoolers? Or elementary kids?
Elementary, so it was part of their, their instructional program that they do within the high ed programs, yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's, it's part of their curriculum, they monitor their heart rate and their exercise and stuff.
Okay, so is that a one-time purchase, or is it something we can reuse?
They reuse the heart monitors, they're like.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if they're the list ones that they wear, I know Mr. Chris Behrens sort of, uh, you know, a number of years ago.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
At, at some point, I'd like to get a better understanding of the food bills. Um, I see a lot of that. Yeah, and, and, uh, like, yeah, um, but then we're also spending, you know, people are buying snacks and other types of food, we're spending a lot of money on food. Why aren't we, why aren't we adding snacks or some franks or stuff like that, I just. I'd like to get a handle on that.
Yeah, you, you mean like for the food services department?
Yeah, so there's a, yeah, we're paying for, paying for all the food services, and then there'll be a credit card transaction or, or whatever it is that is.
So that's individual.
Individual, right, so we're spending actually a couple thousand on it, like.
Really, when we had the school board organization, I purchased the, for the reward one of the state key.
Okay.
And from understanding you correctly, are you saying that you kind of want, um. Instead of having all of these, uh, individual things, like, like, it's not franks on here, um, you know, just different, in, in, instead of having all those individual things on there. You're saying put that underneath the food budget and have that as part of like, hey. I don't know, this week we ordered cupcakes from, and made cupcakes at the food, is that, is that what you're on?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's just interesting, and we're spending a ton of money on food services, but then we're spending more money on. Going franks, or going to, it just seems like there could be a better way, I don't know. I totally get that in school board.
Oh, you're talking more the food service.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, it's food service, food service, but there are lots of things, and then another additional, uh, onesies, twosies, that adds up.
Yeah, there's franks, there's, yeah, I see what you're talking about, there's a number of different places. Walmart.
Yeah, it's like, food service program is probably screen name, there's Elka. Baking, you'll see, obviously the baking, and then there's one for the, uh, more than fresh fruit. But then, what our food service director's part of a co-op, like a lot of the Milwaukee schools. That does large purchasing, and this year with Cisco, and they did that over two years. So I think next year it's gonna be Gordon's, if I remember right, so that's where a bulk of their orders come from. And, you know, food industry, but, um, so a lot of the, even the raw products will go to them, and then they process and it comes back, but.
Yeah.
That's something that she could talk about much more.
Yeah.
And our food service runs in the black.
Yeah.
They do, but we've had a hard time procuring. The food.
Yeah.
Um, over the last couple of years, has that gotten better, Bill, or?
It's got better than years gone now, but it's still a struggle, I think, trying to set menus and then realizing what we thought we were gonna get, we don't get. Yeah.
And we, I know they've looked at even running up to Costco, and try to avoid it, because imagine what that would be, uh.
Right.
Supply chain, schools were buying, burning out of shops, uh, over school lunch, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one four nine, one nine three to one four nine, three zero one. Wire number is nine six three one to nine sixty-three, ACH number is six seventy-five to seven oh four, and the combined amount of four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twelve cents as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one four nine, one nine three to one four nine, three zero one. Wire numbers nine six one to nine six three, ACH number six seventy-five to seven oh four, and the combined amount of four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twelve cents. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm just representing the report, because Williams has the report tonight.
Yes, I do. So all the elementary schools, uh, went to the, the greenhouse over at the high school, so they got to go walk through, and they even got to plant their own seeds, and they take those plants home, so there are still pictures of Westside students. Um, in the middle there, there were some third grade students who went around like the parks and just all around the school and pick up trash, so I thought that would maybe want to include that in there. And then up in the right-hand corner, it's that time of year again where they start doing the ABC countdown, so they do something fun every day into the last day of school, related to like, the letter. Um, so they started with Z and they did zoo keeping, or. And then the picture under there is just picking from their spring fire concert. So activities again, uh, at the greenhouse, I thought those pictures were adorable. In the middle there, um, one of the classes, they had a bunch of eggs that they were incubating, and this was the last day before they would return the chicks back to the farm, so they just. Find the coop, is what they called it. And then on the right, uh, hatch eggs, so one of the activities that the classes were doing. Was they drew this Easter egg, and then they sat on it for a couple of weeks, and after a couple of weeks, it hatched, so all the things got a bunny or a chick. So I thought that was great. Um, so at Jackson, they had a glow stick dance party. In the middle there is, in celebration of May Mental Health Month, uh, they went outside and they blew some bubbles, trying to practice their gate reading. And then on the right again is that greenhouse field trip. Um, at the middle school, in their business class, they were practicing their credit card skills, so there were a bunch of, uh, self-pay related activities where they would make a transaction, and then it would take them somewhere, so that's what they're doing in business class right now, which. I honestly wish they did at the high school, because I have no idea what I'm doing next year when I get a credit card. Uh, and then again, for May Mental Health Month, the middle.
You got personal finance squad.
I really did, but I still want to follow. You don't need a credit card. Uh, so they painted tulips for Hope Squad inside the. Uh, so they painted tulips for Hope Squad inside the rooms. So at the high school, the link there is from Eat Portfolio Night. Um, I can attest to that. It was kind of interesting. I also really hesitated at first, but if you're not familiar with it, really, it's just a wrap-up of like your accomplishments for the past four years. I really, really did not want to do it, but I had my mom come and it was actually really cool to see her and present to her because that's never something that we get to do. And she cheered up, obviously, but it was actually really cool. So there's a link there of like all the pictures from that night. If you want to watch it, I don't know.
Can you share with them like exactly what your eat portfolio was or what you had to do?
Yeah, so we have SST in our classes. I don't know if you guys know, it's just like thirty minutes in on Tuesdays where it's called Street Success Time. So some days are dedicated to mental health. Um, a lot of seniors, this is the first year that they've done it. So we spent a lot of time creating Eat Portfolios. Um, it was like, well, I had all my PTLW classes on there, all of my certifications, like I'm CPR certified, so that was on there. Um, just a bunch of class, classes that like led me to where I'm going. So I'm going to the health, health field. So I put all the classes that I, we go up there, all the clubs I'm in, all the sports I'm in. It's really whatever you want. Students can like add pictures if they feel like it, but it was actually kind of cool, so. Um, so then under that link is for, uh, FFA. Those are the national qualifiers. There's for them. And then the Marquette Girls Anatomy Lab, that was a bunch of post, post students. I went to that. It is so, so super cool, really cool opportunity. Um, first, we just did this little activity with one of the professors there. It was, um, just like a case study, so we worked through that with her. And then, um, we went to a cadaver lab, which I was really like, ugh, but then it turned out to be very cool, so that was very awesome. And then under that is physics, uh, they went to six months for a field trip. We had our DECA finalists, so three students qualified for nationals for DECA. And then under that, we had four students who qualified for skills USA nationals as well. A lot of great things happened at high school. Also want to mention it's AP week, so a lot of tests we have over the last weekend, this week.
Yeah.
Is Lauren Vorpago in HOSA as well?
Uh, she's not.
Okay.
So at options, all pictures there on the left are from our still innovation class. And, um, then on the right there, there's a picture from Brewers game. So that was, um, Milwaukee Brewers had a CBS fifty-eight Reading Weather Meteorologist team up. First, at the fourteenth annual weather day on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, American Family Field was transformed into the largest classroom where CBS fifty-eight Rainy Weather Meteorologist conducted an educational program that kind of enhanced severe weather awareness in baseball. So they end up winning that day, so that's good. And then under that, um, the options, students took a field trip to the Madison Capitol. Students got to tour the different areas of the Capitol and learn more about the history of the Capitol building, as well as both chambers of Wisconsin Legislature, along with the Wisconsin Supreme Court and Office of Governor. And then, um, for CCA, I just wanted to put that in there. So Youth Apprenticeship, appreciate your lunch. And then of course, a shout out to Ms. Pella down there for, for forty-two years in helping out, which is pretty crazy. Um, and then on the right there, there was a field trip to, I can't even do that. South Florida. Oh, yes, I heard really good things about one of the students. I know that one there is, it was a really cool opportunity to go tour that, so. Good stuff. And then, um, I just wanted to say that, um, the youth bill grant was awarded to the US, or to our school from the US Department of Labor in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand and nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. So among the sixty-four total recipients, uh, Elkhorn is one of the only two public school districts in the nation to receive the federal award. So it's very, very cool. Great job.
All right, directors reports. Emily Lynn. Out of here. All right, well, I'm Emily Lynn. I was here last week, so I'll see you again or two weeks, I should say.
And Chris Trier, Director of Schoolwork Opportunities. So, uh, I was here a couple, I don't know, a month or two ago and kind of went over Elk Works and, and really, you know, Emma, Emma's, uh, presentation was a perfect transition into kind of your very, yeah, I agree. Thank you later. I'll give you a couple bucks for that one. Um, but it was a perfect transition, you know, and since I've been in the district twenty thirteen, school board, the community, the local business partners, everybody, the teachers, has made an investment to ensure that when our kids graduate, that that diploma means more than just a piece of paper. And historically, it's most districts that has been recognized either through a GPA or a test score. Now, all of those are important. We're not devaluing anything, but one of the things we really have committed to as a district is making sure that we are engaging students in a variety of options, so they are post-secondary ready, no matter whether that's a two-year, a four-year, tech, you know, a technical college, uh, military, or even employment, whatever their choices. And as long as I've been in the district, uh, we have told our story. We have used our redefining Ready Dashboard to measure our effectiveness, K-12. We've created a gra- a profile to graduate as a district. A lot of great strategies that are recognized, not only within our area, region, but our state. Still, even then, there's always been this challenge, and we owe this, to communicate all these amazing things we're doing and what it means. Because we love in education, acronyms and abbreviations. That's what we do. I'm sure it's pretty common in any industry. I see Ellen's shaking her head yes, so she knows that, right? That there's plenty of acronyms and abbreviations. So over the years, that has resulted in numerous parents saying, well, I had no idea about that. Nobody told me about that. What's going on here? So in order to kind of couch this under one grand, Elk Works created. And as I said previously, it stands for Early Learning and Knowledge. There are four key components to that. New credit opportunities, which would be AP Week, right? Co-curriculars, Career Technical Student Organization, CTSOs, HOSA, DECA, FFA, also in the presentation. Industry-recognized certifications, which can get from Youth Apprenticeships through Department of Workforce Development, but other certifications in, in a particular content area or elective. And then work-based learning experiences, which are Youth Apprenticeships. So those are four key areas. You can click on our redefining Ready website. And all of this is really count, really, as I started the beginning of this presentation, really can only happen with our strategic partnerships that we have in our community. And they are obviously very real and, and they are not just relationships, but true partnerships. You know, in the last, if you look at, for example, the, uh, the Youth Bill Grant, if you look on that press release, the list of business partners, economic development organizations, technical colleges, community organizations, government organizations, that got behind that grant to support that was significant. And as we go through the presentation and some of the other things, we'll kind of add some context to those strategic partnerships.
All right, so I guess I'm just gonna back a little bit because you, I, I want to just, um, for everybody who's new on the board from, from last year too, we came and we talked about a group last year that went up to the Transit and Action Network in Whitewater. I think we went four different times. And the purpose of that work last year was to look at how we are doing as a district for our students with disabilities along those same indicators on the redefining Ready Dashboard. So really breaking it down and looking at, you know, how are our students' disabilities doing with gaining those work-based learning opportunities? How are they doing with the industry credentials, all of that? So we went up there last year and, um, took a, took a team that had a middle school, high school, represents, representation, people across the district. We identified kind of where our needs were. And then we worked with, um, with the team to kind of look at where do we, where do we need to go next, where our goals need to be around. So there's been a lot of research, you know, done on, you know, what are these twenty kind of predictors of success post-high school for adults with disabilities in particular? And when we, we look at the top three that have the highest effect size, we're looking at inclusion, so that collaborative system for inclusion. We're looking at self-advocacy and students having those skills to advocate for themselves and goal setting. And we're looking at overall that work-based learning experiences and career development. And if they have those experiences in school, in high school, and in middle school, and in elementary school, it's showing that they have greater success as adults to having those successful post-high school outcomes. So that's what we built our framework around. Um, and that's kind of the work that I would say we did a lot of last year that has continued into this year.
And I think the foundation of that, which really gave us insight, besides the indicator fourteen data, but also looking, doing a deeper dive into our redefining Ready Dashboard and to see what, how are we performing overall? And, you know, are we meeting the needs of all kids or is it a select few? And that's really how, I think, and I think it was you who brought up when we were approving the CISA two contract. You saw that there was the tan item, line item in there. That's continued work to work with other school districts in CISA two, uh, other, um, experts in the field on how we can continue to advance this. In fact, uh, Emily and I were just up there a couple of weeks ago and actually presented this model two, um, CISA two in numerous districts.
An indicator fourteen, for those that don't know what that means, it is, um, we make, basically, everybody who graduates from here, we call them, um, after they graduate and we ask them these questions that we need to ask them with relation to, are they in, you know, continuing in education? Do they have, you know, full-time employment? And we collect data on that to look at what are these outcomes that we are having? And, um, so that's kind of something that led us into this work and we're seeing that improve already. Um, and so that's been really exciting. This year, um, our kind of next step in this process was that we have a collaborative team between the three high schools in the district, so Option, CCA, and the high school. Um, and we meet once a month and we look at, develop, we developed three, three goals for the district at the beginning of the year. They're over there on the right. Um, so we're looking at a goal around career-based learning experiences, a goal around, um, enrolling our students in either DDR or WEOA, and then a goal around work-based learning experiences. We defined the roles and responsibilities of everybody on the team. We developed IEP manager guides for all of our IEP managers, six, twelve. And that outlines specific activities related to those, those goals that we've set in the framework. Um, so everybody kind of knows their role and how they're preparing kids for those next steps. And then when we meet once a month, um, Jason will be able to show you a snapshot of what kind of our agendas look like.
And our goals, just, you know, I'll go back one second real quick, just I have this. Uh, career, so just to give context, right, because we're falling into the acronym trap. The career-based learning experiences are experiences that kids, the state has defined, gave us clarity on work-based learning experiences and career-based learning experiences. Work-based would be they're working, okay? They're, they're, they're in a, uh, youth apprenticeship or a state co-op or an internship and they're getting paid. In a career-based learning experience, it is everything else that kids, students engage in to learn more about a career themselves as it connects to a career, career-connected learning, if it's experiential, project-based. So when we made the goal of three of five career-based learning experiences, that was the really drive home and the intentional about our kids really digging deeper into what career, what employability skills, what opportunities exist out there. The WEOA stands for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, which is, which is federal monies that go to job centers. So that's a one-stop shop job center that we partner up with. The DVR is the division?
Yep.
Division of Vocational Resources, Re-Revital. Re-Revital, so, and then obviously that we have included work-based learning experiences in those, uh, in those goals.
So just, this is just a snapshot on here. We, we have these agenda driven meetings for every time at the very beginning. We look at each building's progress towards those goals. So we have Excel spreadsheets for each building. It has a list of the kids that they work with and they are, they are marking like, okay, where are we at? Who's gotten these career experiences? Who's got a job? Who's had, who has these things? So that we're taking that time to really look at if we're struggling to meet that goal, what are the barriers coming up? How can we support that? How can we support each other? Collaborate on aligning some of these resources? Um, if, you know, Chelsea Peters is setting something up for the high school, let's make sure Options and CCA are, are included. So just more coordination, more accountability, kind of just engineering results is what Chris says. And I think it's a, a really great term because we're just taking that time to do that.
And I think, you know, if you look at some of the, the other thing that we did, we don't have, lay out in this, in this slide presentation, but it connects to that strategic partnerships, is we have a district-wide group of strategic partners that meet once every couple of months to also support our work. So the Job Center, DVR, VIP Services, uh, Younger, Lakeland. Um, I'm trying to think, numerous other, and then we have, then we have, uh, the high school representatives at CCA and Option. Uh, so we, so we can, besides our internal capacity and trying to create results from there, if we can't do that, we ask for help and we get assistance in guiding us through that work. What has that resulted in? Um, right now, we have a group from the CCA, five students who are going over to Lakeland. Five students with disability go to Lakeland and they are rotating through key, key employment areas. It is housekeeping, like setup, or, um, what's he, setup for banquets, and then it's busing. And it's a win-win situation because one, our kids will certainly win because words, beating their goals. But more importantly, our kids are getting experiences. Some of these kids, I think four of the five, maybe five of them have never had a job, never had a paycheck. Some of their parents were reluctant to even do it because they were concerned about their kids going out. And Lakeland was ecstatic. They're like, we can't find people for these positions. And now some of these kids will then start also working there. Um, we had a conversation about transportation and how VIP, we're gonna work with them on VIP. Uh, we brought in, um, we're gonna be doing mock interviews in, in, on the twenty-second for, for our kids at all three, all three schools. And, you know, we have CCI from, uh, Beloit's, we have, uh, uh, WEOA, or, I'm sorry, uh, Job Center, we have VIP, we have DVR, we have, um, numerous local businesses are gonna be there to help out. And even today, we're at Precision Plus over, and they were gonna, they did a presentation on how to get the job you want. And we had a group of about thirty kids over there. And Amanda, their, uh, their HR director came out and she did an awesome presentation. And then Mike Reader came out and kind of greeted the kids. So it's all of these experiences where we're getting kids in. You wanna go back a little bit there?
Sure, no, this is just a snapshot of, of one of the buildings. And so again, just wanted to give you a visual on kind of that work that's been going on. Jason, if you back up, back to the other side. Again, there you go. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. As far as district level engagement, I think it's also just important to mention that we're really looking at trying to integrate this information throughout the year to, to everyone in the special ed department. Um, so mid-year, did a, did a little bit with the elementary staff on kind of what these goals look like, what our current data looks like for post-high school. Because obviously this work starts when they're in elementary school. Um, having that, that strong base, being able to kind of work on all of these skills, um, even before they get to middle and high school. So that was, that was really, I think, powerful this year for the elementary team to see some of those numbers, some of that data, kind of what, what are the outcomes we're shooting for and how are we preparing all along for those? So, um, I think that's also just important to mention.
And then also, the, the Youth Bill Grant, um, those students who participated in that grant, many of those students will be students with disabilities. And if you look back on our success with the last grant, there are numerous students who had, who got technical certificates and diplomas from Gateway, um, students who had Youth Apprenticeships. Numerous students are working right now in the trades. Uh, one, one just got hired at Selin, uh, another one's been working at HVC at, uh, Comfort, another one at Southern Lakes. Uh, and just, uh, and then another one's over at, uh, tank craft welding. So this is really just engaging, um, a group of students that we should have been and we continue to just offer more opportunities. And I think the intentional work that we're doing behind it, you know, it started, as I talked about, with the culture that the board and the community have created and just continues to grow and evolve. And it's truly rewarding to see that all leads all, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
So thanks for coming back again.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, is Matt, are you prepared to talk about this, our committee assignments?
Yeah, so the committee assignments are attached to the agenda. Um, you can all see what you've been assigned to. I tried to assign people to the things that they were highly interested in. I tried to assign people to the things that they were highly interested in, um, as much as possible. Obviously, our board policy allows anyone to attend any committee meeting. All of them are posted as though there would be, there, there's a potential of having the quorum there. Um, most of the things that they talk about there end up at the full board anyway. Um, and it gives you an opportunity to, um, work through those things that come before the committee, so. Um, that's pretty much it.
James, do you have any questions or?
Okay, all right. Great. Thanks, Matt. Um, good personnel nominations.
All right, the personnel sheet is also attached. We have a, um, large list of shiftings and changes here. I'll go through those. Uh, Matthew Belainas is, um, submitted for his retirement. He's been working in shipping and receiving here at the district office for, um, quite some time. Uh, Jenna Pazit is resigned as a special education teacher from the middle school. Brock Schlemm is a special education teacher at CCA. I know he accepted a principal position on Zorn or athletic director at the principal. Uh, Sarah Townsend, um, has resigned as a special education teacher at Options. The Adame is a Jetson teaching assistant. Melissa Dodge is a teaching assistant at Westside. And then Josh Scottrood, um, stepping down, he has boys at basketball coach. We want to thank all of them for their service. I know their, uh, letters of resignation are the ones that we have are included in our, um, board notes. The, uh, transfer, we've got a number of transfers, Christina Eckman, um, who was the, one of the future's contract hires into the first grade teacher position at Tivitz. Michael Dolly, internal transfer into Joanne Pella's position. She's been shadowing, uh, her this year, working with her all over the high school. Kayla Harrison, a high school, um, from a special ed teacher position, a high school math teacher. Nicole Harmeyer is, uh, to the middle school associate principal from her instructional coach and her business position. Uh, Joe Ambling is a, um, moving from a long-term sub to the, uh, transferred to fourth grade teacher position at Tivitz. We have the appointment of Keegan Stoneward as a high school science teacher. Um, Trevon Keller as a middle school girls' basketball assistant coach and Kelsey Erickson is a middle school cross-country coach. This is hiring season, we have high view interviews going on in the next two weeks.
Jason, could, um, Keegan is, um, a new hire, right?
Correct.
Okay.
No, he, yes, he's a new hire for, um, the science physician.
Right.
Yes.
Um, can you tell us a little bit about him? It's like, is he?
Yeah, Keegan, he's, uh, been teaching up at Baraboo, he's from Whitewater. This is, he's actually, Mrs. Stone's son. So, his last names are still.
Oh, interesting. Okay. All right.
So, um, but yeah, we are excited to add him to the team because he also has, um, physics and computer science certifications, which are really hard to fight as well. So we have a lot of flexibility.
Just thinking some big shoes to fill.
Yes, exactly.
I don't know if anyone can fill this.
All right, any, any other questions?
Uh, I have, I have a comment. Um, I've actually fielded a handful of phone calls about the, uh, Nicole Harmeyer position from some teachers at the middle school. Can I discuss that? They just called me to voice concern.
Yeah, of course.
Can you do it here?
No, you can't discuss personnel performance and, oh, but if you want to make a motion, you remove someone from the personnel sheet for separate difficulty. But you can't discuss individual staff.
So I question on that, um, natural process. So if you remove that outage, um, we would approve theoretically, we approve the rest and then.
We're going to have a discussion. Yeah, so maybe we could come back and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to go back into, um, open session to make that.
Yeah. So just go down the next.
Okay, I'm not objecting to the approval of this. Procedure is interesting there.
No, it, it's just the, if you're going to discuss an individual staff, you can't do that in an open session. By law about that, there, there's a whole process to that in that discussion. If you're just.
Okay, it's more the process than the position, not, oh, sorry, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So when you're, yeah.
This is my bad. I, uh, I, I referenced her by name. I shouldn't have done that. It's my fault, I'm sorry. Yes, so the process, I fielded some phone calls about the, uh, middle school associate principal position that there were some concerns with the process of how, I'm not going to use their name, but the process and the ways, um, people were.
It was being a transfer.
Yeah, being transferred, thank you, yeah. So, so people were, were some, some concern about, um, not having a voice. And this was more than one person. Uh, it was a handful of people and for teachers, I mean, your words ever used consistently were, do you feel anything? Don't have a voice. Uh, but a transfer. I, uh, I want to share with the board, I don't know, you know, process here, looking at the process, obviously, but that was something that kind of, uh, it resonated past, and it was only the past few days that this is, that this has been happening, uh, after our last school session. So it's a, a, a comment I would be remiss if I didn't share these, these teachers' thoughts. They, I, I said, please put it in writing, please send an email. They don't want to do it. Fear repercussion, this is crazy.
Yeah, I have, I have some of that contact with you.
Okay.
Email, it's all the same, just requesting to have, you know, future consideration for that. Voice, you know, like interview, Q and A, as it relates to the principal level positions.
Jason, uh, and am I understanding correctly that people also reached out to me as well then?
Yeah, we got it. Sure, sorry.
Okay. Yeah.
Which I shared with them and explained the rationale, the, the why behind doing the internal transfer that it allows us to create the EL position in that slot and have the potential benefit of, uh, of course, it's easier transfer service to backfill Nicole's position. And if we didn't do an internal transfer from that aspect, again, not, not researching or speaking for Nicole and of those that reached out to me, it was more related to a process, uh, type and why we have a voice in that. Um, but the financial, the potential financial benefits like that and shifting that, getting an EL position in there. I thought, as, as we had discussed, you know, Chris, I felt that that, you know, outweighed that other component of having that open interview, uh, aspect. And also, it's not unprecedented, we've done this several times when, like David Booth, um, when years ago, we collapsed six positions at middle school for budgetary reasons into bringing in line with staffing. Uh, the group was transferred to a associate principal position at the elementary school and filled that slot. So we have done that, you know, several times. I, I showed that why behind, I don't think, you know, that was even the demonstration at Bernie's, you know, we meet with the teams and explain that why behind that process as well. But I think, I think moving forward with that, I think making sure that there is that, that voice and that opportunity to, include the, you know, staff and the, that more traditional interview process. We can certainly create structure to do that. In particular, I think more so towards some of them, you know, rather somewhat like, you'll see, we have a number of transfers within that same building and so forth. And some of them was even some of the team members, so they would like to be a process of that consideration on those internal transfers.
Okay. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet on May eighth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts. Condition upon pass and background check, district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
No.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten? Yes. This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This Rodano?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Hey, any school gifts to present tonight?
Uh, yes, we have two school gifts tonight. The Sugar Creek Lutheran Church donated three thousand dollars to the empowerment fund and used to help students and families in need at the discretion of the district's social workers and, uh, superintendent. Now, and the Westside PTA has donated ten thousand dollars towards the new playground.
Wonderful.
Yeah, to give a little more background, the empowerment fund is, um, it, it's a fund that like, if we here, we have a family who's living in their car, they're homeless. Then the social workers, they just run it by me. We have a contract with the local office for those short-term, you know, when the other community agencies can be leveraged and the social workers work with them to, uh, get access to these other avenues.
Need a motion to approve?
I'm going to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the generous school gifts as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Rodano?
Yes.
I please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I want to thank Sugar Creek Lutheran and the Westside PTA for their generous donations. Okay, second reading of the proposed modifications to the professional and support staff employee handbooks.
Okay, the only change or modification that was brought up, we did add to include international exchange is one of those accommodations as related to, just going to get to the agenda, is it related to the, um, foster parents, safe family volunteers? We, you know, otherwise there were no further, um, changes made to, you know, the intersections in the handbook. There's any parts you want me to pull up and do that or you may have any questions?
Okay, hearing none, I, um, would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the modifications to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented. It's roll call votes.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This Rodano?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four teacher contracts.
May, attached in your board notes is the spreadsheet of the teacher contracts, which represents the movement into an Excel on the staff and the schedule, um, as previously discussed.
So what was the overall percentage?
Well, just for the staff itself, it's about a one point four percent. That's just the cell.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Matt, I entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four teacher contracts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four teacher contracts as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre? Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This Rodano?
Yes.
Frank, please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And then approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four wage adjustments for the central office support staff.
Um, likewise, those are included in the wage adjustment. Again, it reflects that movement on that salary schedule bill that presents roughly one point four as well.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four wage adjustments in central office support staff as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four wage adjustments for central office support staff. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This Rodano?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
It's related, playing with the share with the board, as we're preparing contracts in employment hour and employment less, our support staff, um, Payla Rick, our human resource supervisors, putting together total compensation um, letters to go along with that. So it would show not only pay, but all the benefits. And we've done that some years ago, but we haven't done that recently. So she's doing all those together. All of our employees are available to kind of their whole package.
Announcements.
All right, uh, then your board notes are listed in the announcements. I also, I'll go through those quickly. The, um, policy committee, Jody will be sitting on a dual survey to find the time that works for the members, but we're looking to hold that meeting in, uh, June. The district retirement celebration is Monday, May twenty-second at six PM at the middle school. The school board meeting follows at seven PM. For other reason why it's tonight, so so long is getting a lot of presentations out because we'll narrow that down for that meeting. Um, graduation is quickly approaching. If you would like seats on the field as a school board member, it's not for board members and in your family, but if you'd like to be there for the ceremony on the field, um, and, or if you'd like to help hand out diplomas, you might have to hand to a friend or a relative. Uh, just let us know if you're going to hand out, uh, or let Jody know and she can get that over to the high school. If you're going to hand out diplomas to someone, um, then we need you to be at the practice just so that you know the, the procedures.
And the practice graduation's on the first?
Yes.
And.
Thank you. I'm glad, Ellen, uh, the first ever went to practice.
Where is practice the night before, the morning before, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah. We do practice right away in the morning, usually. Around nine, they're ready. This last week, we were awarded two large competitive grants. Uh, one was a hundred thousand dollar cash prize. It was actually labeled as a cash prize, um, because there's a lot of discretion in how to utilize that. But to get the additional fifty thousand, um, really what it's for is to look at energy efficiency, create a long-term plan to, um, you know, be as, get savings on our energy utilization and so forth. But there's a lot of flexibility with that. Um, we were one of only twenty-five recipients of the nation for that. I really want to give a lot of credit to, um, Katie James, who added that up. The Youth Bill Grant, this was our second awarding of this grant. Um, these monies are really all spoken for and in use to drive that program. Um, but it does provide the funding for that. It's actually a, it's a four-year grant cycle for the four years. But usually it's spent out in three or you have a fourth year of follow-up. But usually it's spent out in three, or you have a fourth year of follow-up for following the kids to make sure they get jobs.
Just like you see when the voucher, the vouchers, there's still youth, but dollars being spent is on follow-up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then we also received a safety grant, which, uh, thirty thousand and forty-five dollars, which is, um, to me, allocated to digitally map all of the schools, which then our local law enforcement will have access to the, the digital maps of the facilities, um, in the case of an emergency. Uh, they currently have access to PDF versions, but this will be like 3D digital versions.
So all three of these grants, um, are there strings attached? I mean, are we looking at things we are gonna have to do in the future to, to be able to get these grants or key to grants?
Uh, well, Youth Build has a lot of strings attached, but it's related to the program that we're doing with that. So it's, it's a well-funded, um, program there. And it also covers percentage of possible number of positions that we have.
Okay.
So if we didn't have that grant, then we would have to fund those ourselves. Um, this, the energy class prize does not have, technically has no strings attached. Um, but if you want the additional fifty thousand dollar cash prize, then you want to do what you laid out or. But there's, so there's training, and then the money's really for to get that plan developed and base standards and so forth. So the individuals working on that, but also we can use it for cost saving reductions or conversion. There's a lot of flexibility with that one. The safety grant is, that's basically the cost of the digital map.
Got you.
And then there will be a, well, like any of these software, there's a small recurring annual fee. We want to keep that license on the digital mapping. I believe it was like two thousand dollars a year on going for that visual mapping utilization of that app. Um, that one was actually forwarded to me, I checked for sure, so originally, I saw the team across that one. Then, uh, Katie took that. Um, and ran with it. And then, uh, just as the, the final announcement, um, I thought this was pretty exciting to share and it's reflective of that. We're good, Joanne Pella, the counselors, like Chris Tronier, the schoolwork, um, coordination. But we have a hundred and twenty-seven students complete a high school academy this past year. And, um, that's an increase from twenty-one percent last year. You can see our numbers down below in the different academies for advanced welding, fire and C and C, sixteen criminal justice, uh, six fire EMS, four IT data limits, nineteen level R sciences, two university, three smart manufacturing, good being involved. All the students in the academies leave with a minimum one professional certification or license. And in some of the programs, um, they leave with two or one. Uh, I know within the welding, they come up with a number of certifications, especially when I go through the advanced welding. We have students, I know of a student who graduated high school early who was traveling around the country working welding and making over, I believe, over sixty thousand dollars a year. We have several students that were graduating out of the field at that level. So, um, this does include the youth apprenticeship numbers, which I believe we're at eighty-five roughly. The picture that you saw, Joanne Pella, was just less than half of all the students that we've been mentioning such. So. Oh, yeah, at fifty-nine reimbursable means we will get a, for each student that graduates having completed a youth apprenticeship or a professional certification, we receive, it's supposed to be a thousand dollars, but what happens is it gets prorated down. They have a limited pool, so it's divided by how many of those students are eligible. Did we have about eight hundred and something per student?
Eight hundred and something, yeah.
Yep. So those dollars go right back into the CTE programming and fund their, their equipment and help support that as well. But anyway, we're, we, last year, we must have been, we were close to a hundred thousand, like ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, yeah.
So it's like a hundred and eighteen.
Yep, and we got another twenty thousand dollars from our youth apprenticeship grants.
Yeah.
So it's about one twenty-five, I think, this year.
One twenty-five.
Yeah, that comes from the DWD, which is blows through DPI. From our first development.
Yeah, so that, that number, the students continue to grow, it, it just, I don't want, it's not self-funded by any means, but it creates a lot of revenue to help cover our CTE programs and those costs. They, you know, upgrade their equipment, repair the equipment, clean it up. So that's all we do, have a closed session discussion.
Need a motion to move to closed session?
I move to approve the closed session first. It's a review to state statute nineteen point eight five, there are one parent C, on a discussed performance of employee, the school board can argue convene.
A second?
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Andre? Mr. Gayhard? Uh, Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
I please?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?